Can be done with nonconforming structures. And so there's two versions of that, I guess. I'll just note that, and would appreciate the city attorney's opinion on this too, if we change it to variance procedure, the bar or the criteria for granting a variance would be a practical difficulty, which is a higher bar than what would be allowed for a conditional use permit. You have a lot more flexibility in granting a conditional use permit than a variance. I think you have some flexibility either way, but arguably that's one of the issues. But the recommendation was the planning commission was that it stay a conditional use permit process. They didn't have the city attorney's comments at that point though. And so we have the two versions in front of you, so you can ask or consider both of those. And I know it's a lot, so I can answer questions as best I can.
Any questions for Ben on the nonconforming lots? So how would this changes currently from not allowing people to add on to a building or whatever if it's on a nonconforming lot, that's now would allow them to, easier to do it?
It would arguably make it more, yes, more easy to do that. I can't say that for sure in every case because it depends on that analysis of the surrounding properties. But for us to do that analysis with any accuracy, I mean, at this point, we're pretty much doing enough of aerial photos to estimate how much impervious coverage is on everybody's lot. That number can change over time, so if one of their neighbors later adds on something else that they legitimately can do and don't need variances for, then that changes the whole calculation again the next time around. And it's just a kind of a cumbersome process, and so our thought was to just make it simpler, just a maximum, a more reasonable maximum impervious coverage for every lot in residential districts and just make sure that they meet that. So there's still other criteria that we have to go through to, as the planning commission and as the council, to make sure that they meet the requirements for the conditional use permit. It's just that that impervious coverage limit would change from a somewhat cumbersome and complicated one to a simple one. And then the other analysis is whether it takes a variance to do that or whether it takes a conditional use permit.
I think we noticed that while we're looking at this, that there were other areas at larger buildings, they're covering more impervious areas. And then an applicant came in and says that'd be smaller. It didn't make sense to him why somebody a couple of blocks away from him is allowing more area to build than him. And in their eyes, it doesn't seem just, so if you had something that pretty much for everybody across the board seems fairer.
Right. You know, from a broader perspective, in my opinion, I think this comes down to a policy about how you want to handle these small, nonconforming lots. So we're talking primarily about 40-foot lots, 40-foot wide lots, which there are a number of in the city. Those, there are others, but those tend to be the ones I think that would, this would come up the most for. So from a broader policy perspective, do you want to make it very, very difficult for people to make additions and changes to their homes that have been on those lots for decades? Or do you want to make it easier? This process would make it somewhat easier. It wouldn't be blank, you know, carte blanche where they could do anything they want, but it would allow for them to make some additions to their property a little bit easier than what the current code says.
Because currently the code now is that they can enlarge the footprint on a nonconforming lot.
So well said.
If their house had burned down or whatever, they can rebuild, but only to the current footprint.
Correct. To the current footprint, just by permit. And then if they wanted to go through the conditional use permit process, they could get a one-time addition of half of the original square footage. So if they had a thousand-square-foot house, they could replace that thousand-square-foot house with a regular permit, over the counter, no public hearings required. If they wanted to add on to it, they could add up to another 500 square feet, 50% of the original thousand square foot. But they would have to go through a public hearing, and then we would have to do this analysis of the neighboring properties to see where it fits in relation to those in terms of their impervious coverage. With the change, we would still make sure they met some impervious coverage limits, but we wouldn't have to look at the neighborhood surrounding them to do that.
I think it's a great idea. My only concern is conditional use, they're very nice.
Right. And, you know, I've seen it both ways in communities as I work in. I did a little bit of extra research on this one. There are some communities that even go as far as allowing these kinds of additions by permit on nonconforming structures where there's no public hearing required at all. But, you know, I've seen both conditional use permits and variances also required.
So Tony, what is your reasoning for preferring a variance versus a conditional use on them?
Well, the only reason I prefer a variance is because that's consistent with statute. But the bottom line is, you as a council have to decide, do you want to allow this or not? So just from a general perspective, I have absolutely no preference whatsoever.
Okay.
It's a matter of, do you as a council want to allow this as a matter of course? Or do you want to make it more difficult? The statute, the premise of the statute is they want to make it more difficult.
Right.
Because the goal is to eliminate nonconformities, so that's why they don't want to allow expansion because they want to ultimately phase those out. The statute allows for a city though, to deviate from that. And you can either deviate from that through variance or you can deviate from that by setting your own ordinance. So the big question as far as what I prefer is going to be dependent upon, it's kind of a catch-22.
Right.
It's dependent upon what you prefer because if every time somebody comes in for a variance, you're going to say, we want to give this to them because we don't want to push people out of town, we don't want to have all these restrictions where you can't utilize your property, so people don't want to be in the city anymore, they go out to the county where they can use their property. If that's, you know, the perspective of the council, then I don't want the variance criteria because we don't want to just automatically be giving variances. If you're going to do that, then it's proper that we just change our ordinance and allow for it. So really, it's a matter of your preference as far as people being to utilize their property. You're going to have to do a balancing act, of course, because you're allowing somebody to utilize their property on a smaller lot. Now that's going to have maybe some impact on the neighbors.
Oh.
You know, if they're cramming in a huge structure, although the way we have it now, they still have to meet setbacks and whatnot, so that's helpful, of course. So really, it's just a matter of how are you going to deal with it in the future? If you want to grant these and want to give them because you want people to use the property, then do the ordinance. If you don't, and you're of the attitude, you know, that's similar to the state statute, we don't want to allow this because we want to phase them out, then I think we go with the more difficult standard with a variance standard. So it's really a matter of what you prefer.
So the next question, then, how does this fall into line if I got an 80-foot lot and I want to split it and make two nonconforming lots so I can have two structures on it?
You wouldn't be able to do that. If that was a new subdivision of your 80-foot lots, the minimum standard is today at least 60 feet, depending on the zoning district you're in. So you wouldn't be able to legally do that without a variance to make that split in the first place.
How many conditional use permits have we granted, any idea?
Under this provision specifically?
Right.
I can't speak to that, I guess, for the long-term history since I've been working with the city. It's, I think this is the first one. It's, I would guess it's not more than a couple a year at the most.
Well, can you guys speak to what the planning commission's intention is as we, as you bring this forward?
I would think I was the only one that voted in opposition of it, just for to plain simple fact, it's, for how many years we've been trying to get away from the nonconforming lots and to let them rebuild and upbuild the lot more than it already has, we've kind of set precedence, I think, over the years in the past of not doing it, so why we'd want to change midstream, start allowing smaller houses and...
Things change. We're going to have a lot of issues to deal with with the annexation of Bell Prairie because there's a lot of things in play right now where you're not allowed to build, what is it, a 1,400-square-foot accessory structure?
1,400 is the maximum you can have in accessory structures currently, yes.
And some of these properties have acres, you'd be allowed to put a 1,400-square-foot garage only. So this is something we have to consider in the future. And in the instance we have here, is a person came in, didn't want a small garage, wanted something a little bit bigger. I can't remember the exact square footage. I don't think it was near 1,400 though even. And he wasn't allowed to do so because, well, at one time he was. We gave him a conditional use, but he didn't get it done in time because his son was injured and he just couldn't do any work around the house and stuff. So he came back, and here we're looking at denying him the second time around after we accepted him the first time. And then we're discussing, you know, how much area we have that is, you know, concrete or something and how much runoff we need and everything, and maybe we could get down with less of that, which would allow larger structures on some properties. So that's where I pretty much came up with, and we're looking at that, that if we're going to go to, because of Bell Prairie and the annexation, if we're going to be changing things, why couldn't we change it across the board, make it more uniform? And keep this thing where people can maybe build a little bit bigger structure as long as all the setbacks and all the soil is correct and stuff and go with that. So Jeremy, I think he's kind of looking at it as, I'm going to vote the way it is right now, which is an event thing.
Well, the thing is, prime example, this guy wants to come and build a garage from his lot line to his lot line, five feet off both lot lines in his backyard, he's going to cover his whole backyard. Well, now where do we run into the issue if he's a couple of feet off the line? So we're listening, if we're going to allow this, we need to still hire a survey.
Keep the setbacks.
Right. And then the last time when we granted him his thing, we made him have a drive-through garage so he could have access to his backyard and all kinds of stuff too, so it's just...
I guess it was kind of a weird situation to be in where you grant someone a conditional use, and because of circumstances in life, he could not do it. It wouldn't even be an issue if his son wasn't injured, would have never been brought up. But now, now we're debating if we should deny him or not, you know? So that's where it all rose.
Mr. President, if I may, in a nutshell, what this ordinance amendment accounts for is properties that have a house on it currently. So if there's a vacant 40-foot wide lot, that, this wouldn't address those or allow those to be built on. This is where there's already a principal structure on there where somebody wants to add a garage, add a kitchen, add a bedroom, whatever it may be, to allow them to use that property a little bit more, as opposed to just saying, this is what you're, what you have is what you, what you get, so...
Well, we just granted one. I mean, for the house that wanted to have the wheelchair access through the kitchen and...
That was, that was a variance, that was not a nonconforming lot. It was a nonconforming structure and then it was too close to the lot line, and we allowed by variance in addition to that. It was also within the side air inside pack, but that was different in the sense that it wasn't a nonconforming lot.
That wasn't a nonconforming lot.
Right.
Questions or concerns? No worries, everybody's happy?
There are, Mr. President, there are other sections of changes I can go over. I didn't know if you wanted to take them one at a time, but would you like me to go over the others now?
Sure.
In section D, accessory buildings, there's two changes suggested there at this point from the planning commission in number six. This is just a clarification. We had the recent amendment to the city code a couple of months ago regarding recreational vehicles and whether, how long they can be lived in. And so we just wanted to make a clarification in number six that recreational vehicle could be allowed as a dwelling when it's otherwise allowed by city code. This is a section that normally says that those RVs can't be used as a dwelling, and so we wanted to make that clarification. In number eight, currently there is a restriction that all accessory buildings have boxed eaves on them, and this change would make it so that those buildings less than 200 square feet would not have to have boxed eaves. So most typically, this would come up with a sort of typical garden shed. A person would not have to have boxed eaves on that to, to be compliant with the city code. And that 200 square feet coincides with when a building permit is required and building compliance with the building code. Then section E, unless there's other questions on the last section. Section E has required yards and open space. We have two changes here. In number four, there's currently a restriction in the ordinance that there can't be any obstructions at street intersections that would block the view. And that is for a distance of 25 feet back from where the property lines intersect. So if there's a sidewalk, for instance, it's usually fairly close to where the sidewalks would intersect, that's where it would start. You would go 25 feet back in either direction, draw a line between those, and that would be the area that was supposed to be free of obstructions. And the obstructions are defined as anything that's taller than two and a half feet and shorter than 10 feet. So you could have a tree that was very tall and had branches up high, that wouldn't be an obstruction. You could have a low fence or something, or a little shrub, but anything in between that area would be an obstruction. The proposed change here would be to make it so that it had a controlled intersection. Instead of going 25 feet back from that, where the property lines intersect, you would go back 10 feet. With the reasoning being that when you have to stop at that intersection anyways, or somebody coming at you has to stop, there's less need to have a long site distance. They're stopping anyways, they can see who's coming or who's not coming from the other street. And so that was the discussion. We did have some discussions about whether you could go even closer than 10 feet, and the planning commission suggested that we stick with the 10 feet as the minimum. And then the last change is in number five. This somewhat goes back to the first discussion we had about impervious coverage. Currently, the ordinance, or the city code limits impervious coverage on lots to 75% coverage. This would reduce it to 33% with an allowance for some additional coverage when you have a lot larger than 12,000 square feet. So it would scale up as you, as your lot got larger and larger, you would be allowed more and more impervious coverage.
One to four unit structures.
Right, and this would be limited to those lots that have one to four unit, residential units on them. So it would not apply to larger apartment buildings, for instance. One thing we did notice since the planning commission made this recommendation is that there's the possibility that we would have planned unit developments out there that would have potentially very small lots. Sometimes planned unit developments are developed in a way where you have a very small lot around each unit, and then everything else is common area. And so we were suggesting the possibility of adding some language there that would allow for greater coverage in planned unit developments when it's set up from the start, basically as part of the master plan that's approved by the city for that planned unit development. That was not something we discussed with the planning commission, it's something we've noticed since, since that meeting. So those are all the proposed amendments.
We all understand how is setbacks from the stop signs or non-stop signs with the sidelines, all that, all, you don't have beacon up there, do you? We could just show an example. It's all people with the lilac bushes or pine trees on their boulevards, almost up to the stop sign, and would all be up for debate.
He said trees are okay.
If their branches aren't lower than 10 feet...
They have them trimmed up.
They have them trimmed up. But there are... But they came into question two with fences, is a chain link fence, is that an obstruction? You have chain link fence on the corner, or is it not? I see we had a new one added. Chain link fence on the corner.
Yeah, those are all questions. We, we had quite a lot of discussion about this at the planning commission meeting, particularly about the shrubs and trees that there are at least some intersections out there where trees and shrubs have been, could arguably be called an obstruction under this code, but being that we work off complaints, a lot of them have just happened over the years. It's possible that they've been there for 50 years, 100 years, whatever it might be, and they predate the restrictions on this, so... But at this point, fence, whether it's a fence, a tree, a shrub, or any other kind of obstruction, they're all treated the same.
Right.
And that part hasn't changed, that's what the current language says. So the only change was really whether we would drop the 25-foot distance down to 10 feet when it's a controlled intersection versus a non-controlled.
And you're all aware what a controlled intersection is? Stop signs, you have to stop.
Only on two sides.
Two sides, yeah. Okay, so in this instance, we can see we've got property line right here at the edge of the sidewalk, and we've got the house which is in proximity, but we do have... All right? Here you've got the structure essentially cut out the edge of the property line, but because it has a stop sign on two of the legs, then if this were a fence, then they'd be within, they could have that within 10 feet as opposed to 25. Right now, technically, it's supposed to be 25 feet back, and then you have that triangle here. You're free and clear of, of everything. On the other side of the intersection, this one is probably closer to that issue where you've got 25 feet this way, you've got 25 feet back, and this area is all...
See now, like that shrub that's in there, once that reaches two and a half feet...
It needs to be trimmed down.
You need to get the chainsaw on, give it a haircut.
And on the other side of the road, there's a little tree in there.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I am going backwards. The triangle goes from here, 25 feet back.
Yep, and that little tree, and it's 25. If you take 10 feet off, you're taking the tree out of there.
Yep.
So that tree would have to be removed.
That tree would be, would be in conflict of it currently, yes.
And this would also keep people from planting trees in a boulevard because once they hit two and a half feet down, you've got to trim them.
True.
Well, there's corners.
Yeah, there's on the corner.
But now people plant trees where they want.
One on First Street.
Yeah, and that's one, 10 feet only with a stop sign, if it's no stops, and you're back 25 feet both ways.
True.
From the sidewalk, so it's right up to the corner of houses in some areas.
Right.
So we passed this. Is it going to be complaint-driven yet? Are you going to drive around and make sure every intersection complies with you?
It would be complaint-driven as well, yeah.
Okay. Unless it's so obvious that we do know it's...
True.
Like the one house that comes right up to both sidewalks, that's, that's probably why there's a stop sign there right now.
Exactly, yeah. Now, obviously, in that case, it's going to be unrealistic to say you've got to move the house.
Move your house.
It's grandfathered in before the ordinance.
Take the two and a half, can't put a section out there.
You'd have to put a patio out there to support.
I have a question on what we're trying to accomplish here with these changes. I mean, to me, it appears like we're trying to make something comply that it doesn't allow, whether it's a fence or a tree, a bush.
I mean, we, we did a preliminary window survey, if you will, just to go around town and see, and this was more on the east side than the west side, I'll be honest, I didn't get over to the west side. But looking at the site triangles at 25-foot everywhere, there was well over half of them, probably closer to 75%, that had something in that, that intersection, for instance, that, that tree there. That would be an obstruction in that quadrant. So...
If you look at it, does it materially impede you from seeing a car coming that way?
No. But to the letter of the ordinance, yes, it does impede, it doesn't meet that 25-foot area. So to try to give a little bit more flexibility to property owners that want to be able to plant stuff or use that portion of their property, we thought it was realistic to look at, okay, there's obviously a separation or a distance between a controlled intersection versus an uncontrolled. At a controlled intersection where you have a stop sign, you've got the stop sign, that's what you're reacting to when you're, when you're stopping. At an uncontrolled intersection where there's no stop signs, you want to be able to see what's coming, and so in that case, you would want all of that stuff to be free and clear. But with just the sheer number of obstructions that, that are out there, it makes sense to try to look at it because we haven't had a whole lot of complaints about obstruction intersections. Make sure that it conforms to the current standards.
Tony, if somebody comes to that intersection and they run it, hit, hit somebody, and then they claim the city boulevard or within our ordinance, we allowed discrepancies and they couldn't see, and they blame it on that, would they have the right to, like sue the city or...
They can sue the city for anything. They're going to try and sue the city because the city's the deep pocket. So they're going to try, you know, what the result will be, will be dependent upon how we enforce our ordinance. Many ordinances are enforced by a complaint-driven process, so if we're just not enforcing it at all, not doing anything, even with complaints, that would lend them a stronger claim. But if we're enforcing our ordinance, what we're doing through, so through a complaint mechanism, that, that's a standard method of enforcing ordinances. And so they would have a weaker claim, not to say that they, they could prevail on that. They, they possibly could, but...
Well, I can tell you, somebody that works at insurance, if we find out there's a complaint about an obstruction, and then an accident occurs, and we know about it, we're coming to the municipality on the subrogation.
Yep.
Looking to recover.
Yep.
So in my opinion, we shouldn't have any uncontrolled intersections at all. Does a yield sign qualify as a controlled intersection?
No. No, only stop sign or stop signals is what we've got in the current proposed ordinance.
But by putting that 10-foot for, for controlled intersections, we're actually making an attempt to make it a little better.
Right.
Right, that's, that's the, that's the point of it, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, and this is for residential areas, I would call the example, everything in downtown doesn't meet the site triangle.
Right.
But they're all controlled intersections.
That's right.
So, I mean, if, if we just have a blatant disregard for controlled intersections, we have all these accidents, there are a ton of accidents downtown because of the sightline issues. You know, there's a reason the controlled intersections can have a better visibility because there's a stop sign there, and people should be following their, you know, the rules of the stop sign. So that's why we feel there's, there can be an exception.
Right. When you look at the stopping distance for, for an intersection, there's really two components. There's the braking and the reaction distance. So if the stop sign is the item that you're going to be reacting to, you're going to see that well in advance of getting to the intersection, so that takes your reaction distance down to zero. Your braking distance, you're still braking for, for the stop sign as opposed to anything else that's coming over there. So both of those items get to zero. Arguably, you could have a zero setback and still meet your site distance requirements with today's standards. The planning commission and we don't feel zero-foot setback is, is appropriate in a residential area. That's where we came to the 10-foot as a reasonable number to go with for that site triangle with a controlled intersection such as a stop sign.
triangle with a controlled intersection such as a stop sign.
I think where that came from is, well, there you have a six foot wood fence, solid fence there right up to the corner versus 10 feet back on that edge. That tree there, yeah, you can see around it. Can you see through a six foot fence there on that corner?
True.
It's way, you know, it's no different than building your house in the corner. Why you have property line setbacks if we're gonna build and block right up to the edge, that's.
Yes, you're right.
Now that one make a variance or a conditional use nowadays.
Correct.
Is that in business?
Nope.
That's residential.
That's residential, yeah.
No. We, if we want this to only apply in residential areas, we probably should specify that. Actually, that's not really stated in the current language. And it limits itself to just residential. So theoretically, I think this would apply in your downtown business district as well. So that would be the other problem. I think, you know, that was part of the thinking here is that if we have this many intersections that are technically not in compliance with this section, let's have the discussion, is this really the set of rules that we want or is it not? And if it is, then even if it's complaint driven, if we suddenly start getting lots and lots of complaints about these kind of things, we have to follow up on them and probably start having people, well, very likely have people cut down trees and take down fences and do these things that, and so if we're gonna do that and there's a good reason to, then we should. If there's, if it's not really consistent with what you want as a policy, then we wanted to have this discussion to see if that was the case and then we wouldn't have as many things to enforce. But, you know, I think even this tree up here that we were looking at before, you know, arguably that, I would imagine that's within 10 feet, at least some of the branches are, are within 10 feet of the, and so that tree would probably have to come down too, even with the change that we're proposing. And so, I mean, you could theoretically go as, as, give a lot of flexibility and just have the first sentence in there. Just say you can't materially impede and then leave it up to somebody's discretion to say, is that really impeding vision or not? The problem with that is that it's somewhat subjective as to whoever you give the authority to say that. You know, whose opinion is it not obstructing the view?
Somewhat subjective, it's entirely subjective.
So the 10 feet is kind of a middle ground between allowing anything to go up as long as it really doesn't impede vision versus what we have now, which is 25 feet back in all directions regardless of what kind of intersection it is.
So if someone's got shrubs or bushes. Several, several intersections where even if it's a controlled intersection, the bushes are way past the 10 foot and you've gotta sneak out past the stop sign in order to peek around the bushes to see if there's anybody coming the other way. Could they maintain those bushes as long as they cut all the branches 10 feet away from that line? Could, could the shrubs or the, you know, stay there? But measure back 10 feet and cut all the things out there.
Two and a half feet high.
Right now, this would be 25 feet back, so if we don't change it, they're going 25 feet back if somebody complains.
That is controlled, we're actually giving them a little better, more area to work with.
Correct. The thing is, if we're gonna enforce it, if we get, you know, one person, they're gonna go around town, you're gonna have a whole list of complaints if it can be complaint driven.
We have a new website.
Right, but I'm just saying, you start enforcing some of it, we better get ready to enforce it. Across the board because you take somebody, make somebody cut their tree they got in their front yard down, they're gonna be out looking, looking at town and then with a list.
Correct. So is the ordinance we have now complaint driven?
Yes. Right. But as I'm saying, you know, until they start, and based, where this comes from is the fence is when we're looking at redoing the fence, ordinance is where this really came into, came into play, so.
You know, we've had enough, a few complaints about shrubs or trees or things like that, but I think the nature of, of this in any community, in most communities are complaint driven, is that over time you have lots of things that never have generated complaint. And so you have more and more things out there that don't comply, but were never complained about. And so then at some point, you have this sort of critical mass of 70, you know, percent of intersections are not complying. And so if we have good reason to enforce the ordinance, I would say we should. If we don't think we have that good a reason, then we should loosen up the rules a little bit. And we should do that.
Obviously, it's there for public safety.
Right, that's the primary concern, in my opinion.
It's fairly much loosening the restrictions, so I think it's a step in the right direction because I, I think at the controlled intersection, 10 feet makes sense.
And if you do have to go talk to a land property owner, and you show them that we're giving them a little better deal at controlled intersections and this is a safety issue, they might wanna comply a little more. Right across from my house, lady had lilac bushes going right into the boulevard, you cannot come out that intersection without, just like you're talking about, you pull out, you have the stop sign, then you have to pull out, look again because you couldn't see. The neighbors went over and talked to her about it and she took them out because she understood. Think you're gonna get a few complaints at first and then after a while, people just understand it and they'll quit doing it.
Any other questions?
Well, we've talked about a lot of changes. Are we not comfortable accepting it without knowing what all those changes are? If we're going to be making some changes, adding residential, are we just gonna craft a new one as we make the motion? Introduce and accept and introduce, that's what it is, isn't it?
What's this?
Introduce?
Was this an introduction so we could discuss it here and then take it back to the planning commission or just?
This would be the first reading.
This would be the first reading, and then after the second reading is when you would vote on the, on the items. We can definitely make those changes and bring it back to the next council if that's the direction we wanna go.
I think we need, for one, to understand if we're gonna do it as a variance or a conditional use, for one.
We will need some direction from the council whether they want the conditional use or the variance, for sure on the first part, the non-conforming lots.
So would be appropriate to make a motion to table this? Or do we just wanna, what do we wanna do with it?
Introduce it and?
Is there some consensus if we want a conditional use or a variance?
I would like to see a conditional use, but I'm not a consensus. What's the rest of the?
I like variances.
You like variances.
Tighten them up.
And tightening it up though, then the people move out of that area, that property's gone, that ex parte of the city's gone, and they go live out in the country and provide support to the county. I'm comfortable with the conditional use. I am as well.
Still won't have a consensus.
It's three to one. Let's hear from everyone else.
Sounds like they're taking a vote to be.
Well, we have to have a consensus. We need at least five.
Well, we know we have some of the language, right?
Yeah, I guess.
I just wanna make sure we can still introduce and hash those issues out.
We introduce and accept, it's an as-is. You can make minor tweaks, but not much.
Minor changes, but that's not a minor change.
Right.
A CUP or.
Well, there are gonna be some more changes coming, and Ben and I had talked about this, about needing a separate public hearing, so, you know, I'll defer to Ben. Would it maybe make sense for them to deny it and bring it back with changes then and include the other changes and then we mix that into the second, second public hearing?
We could sure do that. I, you know, there's a few different issues at hand here. I don't know if they wanna take one issue and pass it along and.
Right.
Send the other one back to the planning commission.
Right.
I mean, if the only issue on the first one is conditional use for experience, you know, the recommendation from the planning commission was for conditional use. So if, if that's the direction you wanna go, there's no change, I think you could probably proceed to the next hearing and pass that. If you wanna switch it to a variance, I guess I don't know your policy or how you look at that in the past, whether, what's a minor change or what isn't. I mean, in ordinance amendment, the planning commission is only making recommendations and so ultimately you have final say, you can change anything almost you want. So I think, to me, it comes down to, and somebody can step in if I'm stepping out of hand here with past policy or past practice, but if you want, if you think it's a major enough change that you want the planning commission's input, you can send it back to them. If you think it's something that you're comfortable just proceeding with and making a change to a variance, I don't personally see that as a significant enough change in proposed changes here that you couldn't just do that if you wanted to. The issue with the fences and the obstructions, we do have some other ordinance amendments that are gonna, are somewhat related to that in terms of fence height and, and those kinds of things. So I think if you aren't comfortable dealing with that one quite now, we could come back with that later. But that said, the other changes that we're talking about with fences really don't have anything to do with the site triangle. They're just in other areas of property. So they're, to me, they're not solding together that you have to deal with them together.
The discussion with fences is keep them out of there completely.
So do we have, anybody wanna step up and introduce or table or send it back?
I would like to take it as is and take it as a conditional use and then the rest of it, send back and deal with it.
So is I, a motion to introduce as?
Option one.
Present it.
Option one, introduce as presented for that item.
So this would be for, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, the whole works as came and introduced. As a CUP. Resolution 2016-46 authorized execution of snow.